10:00, good morning. We're calling this meeting to orders and open session.
Thank you. Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good morning and welcome to this special public hearing. Planning and zoning, item 1.1. Conduct a public hearing to consider taking the following actions concerning planning file P-17-45, Mines Cannabis Distribution Facility regarding APNs 015-490-08, 015-90-09, 015-490-10, and 015-490-11 in Douglas City area. One, adopt a mitigated negative declaration for the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, finding that on the basis of the whole record before the board, including the initial study and comments received, that there is no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant effect on the environment and on the mitigated negative declaration reflects the board's independent judgment and analysis. And number two, introduce, waive the reading of, and enact an ordinance amending Trinity County zoning ordinance, ordinance number 315 by rezoning assessors' parcel numbers 015-490-08, 015-490-09, 015-490-10, and 015-490-11 from Highway Commercial, known as HC, to Heavy Commercial, known as C3. And number three, adopt a resolution which approves a request for a conditional use permit for a commercial cannabis distribution facility. Planning Commission recommendation, do not approve any part of project. Unknown fiscal impact. We will be opening in a moment to public comment.
Madam Chair, I will be recusing myself on this matter. I was named in a lawsuit by the applicant, and although that matter has been dismissed by the court in an abundance and caution, it would be appropriate for me to step out. I'd ask my partner, Sophie Meyer, to take over, who has no involvement. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would also advise that I was also personally allowed to step up during this.
Sophie, in that lawsuit were the board supervisors named also?
I think, I don't know who was named in that lawsuit. Who was named in that lawsuit?
Perhaps the county council.
Yeah.
Thanks for your question.
I had absolutely zero involvement whatsoever, having seen it, so that's why I'm here today for this part of it.
The county was named on the lawsuit but not the board, and no individual members of board supervisors were named. The board will go into public comment. I will remind the public that you have three minutes. You are to direct your comments to the board supervisors. The staff will not be answering questions from the audience. They will be only engaging with the board supervisors. Please step up to the microphone.
On your order?
Yes.
We don't have normal commentary agenda, and we've got to perp.
I'll step over.
I say I do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
There's a talking public comment that we have to do.
Yes, I am. Kim Hunter, the Building and Planning Director, will be presenting the staff report today.
Are you here? Is it loud enough? Supervisor Brooks has a board as well.
Oh, apologies.
There's, Kim, there's many questions of why the meeting is held today. Could you go away versus normal public time and?
Yes, I'd be happy.
Could you go and set up why this meeting is today?
Yes.
Not on a normal order?
Um, first of all, the planning staff is severely understaffed at the moment, so we are, the timeline getting projects, this is already probably overdue even if it wouldn't have held on Tuesday regular meeting, getting this item to the board. However, the special meeting for today, March 5th, that was staff-driven based on just the capacity to get this item to the board and also the fact that we knew at that point we were going to have one, possibly two, absent board members. And we did fill out for this item.
I could hear that. Don't want a close speech.
We have to follow the goal a lot. I apologize. Hold the microphone closer to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I got that, everybody.
Yes, the special meeting was held at the request of myself because of the possibility of only having three members present at that meeting. We did have one that was not present, but we didn't know at the time, and we were looking ahead on the calendar. And so wanting to get this project moving, it was looked at today as the alternative date. That was my request. There was no variable discussion or no discussion with the board, and that is how we ended up having a special meeting today, staff-driven.
And could you explain the noticing again?
Oh, and the noticing, yes. Adjacent land notifications and the legal notice in the paper were set out. That requires a 10-day noticing period. Just to err on the side of caution, we had the legal notice written in the paper both weeks. Generally, we only do once, but we wanted to make sure it was posted both weeks. So this week's paper and last week's paper had the note.
19th and 26th.
Yes, I apologize. The 19th and 26th. Yeah, we went with both days, so that is the situation.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
No, I appreciate that very much. Any more before we launch? And before Kim gives the staff report, I just wanted to advise the board that additional backup was handed out this morning for this item. You each had a copy, and then there was additional copies placed on the back table.
And will that be also the backup online for those that are watching the video?
It will be added as all other, yeah.
And that backup just contains a resolution should the board choose to approve the conditional use permit. Okay, I'll continue with the staff report. This item for you today for consideration is application P-17-45. This is an application requesting to rezone approximately 5.5 acres of project site located at 3661 State Highway 3. There's four parcels that are comprised of that project area. The current zoning, the current general plan is village. The current zoning is Highway Commercial, which is HC abbreviated, the zoning district. And the proposal is to, it also includes a rezone to the Heavy Commercial zoning district, which is the C3 zone. In addition, a conditional use permit for a commercial cannabis distribution facility is proposed, and with a determination of a mitigated negative declaration for the California Environmental Quality Act. This item has been reviewed at several meetings with the Planning Commission. Most notably, public hearings were held on January 17th, 2019, and again on January 9th, 2020. This item was also before the board on February 20th, 2019. At that time, only the components of the mitigated negative declaration and the rezone came before the board. The board has not previously considered the conditional use permit. Based on that fact, this item did return to the Planning Commission January of this year. That meeting was held January 9th, 2020. And that was to consider the direction, the result of the direction given from the board at the February 20th, 2019 meeting to revisit the environmental impacts of traffic, soil, and odor of the project. So that was taken before the Planning Commission in addition to holding a public hearing for the conditional use permit, which had not previously occurred to consider the project in its entirety. At that meeting on January 9th, I'm happy to answer questions further about the project should they come up, but I feel you're familiar with this project, so please, if you have a presentation and you want more specifics on the project, I'd be happy to provide those to you. Right now, I'm just going to go briefly through the points and the history and connect the dots to where we were to where we are now. If that's okay. So at the January 9th, 2020, Planning Commission, as with previous meetings on this issue, there was considerable amount of public comments and written comments received for this project. Those were included in the staff report. They're quite numerous. There was comments received both in opposition to the project and also for the project and support of the project. At the January 9th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, public hearing was held, and after the public hearing, the Planning Commission considered the project. That time, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to the board supervisors to deny the project, specifically the mitigated negative declaration because it did not adequately address the issues of traffic and water, the rezone because it's inconsistent with the Douglas City Community Plan reflecting desired updates by the public. I'll go into that a little bit more in a minute. And that the conditional use permit therefore without the rezone would not be appropriate in the Highway Commercial District, which is the existing zoning district, without the rezone to be having commercial C3 zone. That motion, a motion was made and passed reflecting these findings do not approve the project and the recommendation by the Planning Commission by a 4-1 vote. Now, the planning staff maintains that the proposed commercial cannabis distribution project is appropriate for the sites provided by the zoning code surrounding industrial uses and the 1987 adopted Douglas City Community Plan. Staff also maintains that CEQA, the CEQA California Environmental Quality Act, initial study and mitigated negative declaration that adequately addressed the potential impacts of the project. Although the Planning Commission recommends denial of the project, the planning staff maintains that the CEQA initial study, the mitigated negative declaration adequately addresses the issues raised by impacts of traffic in relation to the proposed project. The traffic analysis completed by the Trinity County Department of Transportation for the environmental evaluation looked at potential impacts of the proposed project, cannabis distribution and rezoning to both Highway 3 and the Marshall Ranch Road, which is a county-maintained roadway. As noted, the proposed project would access the site from Highway 3, and the access to Marshall Ranch Road would remain gated and not used for their commercial purposes. The traffic analysis determined that the incremental increases for the project would have no effect on the current level of service for the roadway and nearby intersections, which includes the intersection of Highway 3 and the Marshall Ranch Road, and that no significant increases associated with this project with traffic demand are expected in the future. The LOS, level of service, is consistent with the 2040-year projections. And based on that information, the previously provided in the traffic analysis county staff's opinion that this project, the proposed projects, will have a less than significant impact on transportation and traffic resources. Therefore, regarding the issues and impacts of traffic, no changes were proposed for the mitigated negative declaration. As for water quality, staff also maintains that the findings of a mitigated negative declaration and the environmental analysis completed for CEQA adequately addressed the issues raised regarding the impacts of the proposed project on water quality and quantity. The site investigations at the former logging and paper site to the east of the project did not find any groundwater contamination that would pose a risk to the parcel or others adjacent parcels, including the project site. The analysis found that the groundwater contamination was not present at off-site properties, and thus assumed not at this project site either. Regarding water supplies, the applicant has documented onsite water well that is available water supplies for the intended use. As described on the proposed project, water supplies needed for the use are eliminated drinking, restroom uses, and minor cleanup for the distribution facility. There are currently no proposals by the applicant for extensive use of water at the project site. Ultimately, water use and onsite availability are the responsibility of the applicant. Should groundwater supplies prove not to be sufficient for the intended use of the site, the applicant will be responsible for finding additional sources for the use. Based on previous documentation in the initial study of mitigated negative declaration, the applicant has complied with the requirements showing available water supply for the proposed project. The planning staff, based on information on the record, is that the proposed uses will have less than a significant impact on water uses. The project is also consistent, according, based on staff recommendation, with the current Douglas City Community Plan. This plan was adopted in 1987 by the board supervisors. While it is recognized that Douglas City Community Plan may be in need of updating and refreshing, state planning and zoning laws provide for the development and the adoption process of community plans. Community plan is an extension of the general plan and implements the general plan for specific community area. Staff disagrees that the community plan has been updated by members of the community without staff review and formal adoption by the board supervisors. Lastly, staff maintains that the project with the proposed mitigation measures and condition of approval would not introduce ground disturbance to the site and would not, would create less impacts associated with traffic, water, and wastewater disposal than many of the uses already permitted in the Highway Commercial zoning district, including convenience store with or without gas pumps, restaurants, hotel motel, general office, and retail uses. So with that, the planning, planning staff does recommend the example of this project is in compliance with our legislative policies and does recommend approval of the project. And this is obviously not the same view that the Planning Commission took, and is not consistent with their recommendation to the board supervisors to deny the project. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I do, I don't, nobody's heard that, so go ahead. Can you just put through, I think you had three points that the Planning Commission, that the Planning Commission discussed. I had the conditional use permit and the CUP, but was one other point of discussion of interest that they've raised, it was like your top one point that you opened your comments with?
The CEQA analysis, the initial study and the mitigated negative declaration? Yes. That was the three components of the project.
Got it.
So more of a technical question to start off with. Since the board, or since the commission did not take into consideration a conditional use permit, since they declined to give, recommend the rezone, that conditional use permit process, if approved here, have to go back to the Planning Commission?
No, the Planning Commission did not review the conditional use permits in January, on January 17th, 2019. They did review it in January 9th, 2020. They reviewed the project in its entirety. So there's two times that they considered this project. The first without the CUP, and the second with the whole project for all the components. And that's when they made the motion.
So let me go to more kind of abstract view that the, that the commission took on updating of the general community plan. So since our general plan is 40, 15, 200 years old, I was losing myself in the math The commission and the board over the years have gone with a very wide brush because it's obviously not very useful documenting anymore in bending to the times. So a general plan from, or a community plan from 1987, obviously, is not what the community would be feeling is probably appropriate today in any of our communities except the Medicaid. So you're standing that, and I'll get to a question here, it's something really, you're standing that, that since it's not been updated, it's not valuable to say that community input has in fact changed their community plan. Where our basis over the past 20 years has been to basically roll over and take these things and adjust as we've gone, even though that's not documented. Is your view that that's not legal to do? Or is your view that it must, must go through that process to take the community's consideration?
Well, it's very, very important to take the community's considerations regarding these matters seriously and document those. There is a formal process in place. When unofficial things start happening in code, it is very, it is very difficult to know when you have pencil lines in the margin saying, you know, direction given, this is the new policy on this, very informal. And so, no, they do maintain, and I do agree, that the documents, they need to be formally adopted to be recognized. That is the process set forth in state law. And while very, very pertinent and very legitimately concerned that can be raised, there is a process, and that needs to be followed. It's the same with code. When you start adding to code in different directions, it gets very convoluted, it becomes inconsistent, and you have a turnover of staff that didn't know something previously, like the folks in Weezerville want to see monument signs versus pole signs, and it's written in the margins of a, of a planning document. That doesn't fly, and you just, you can't follow all of those things. They need to be formally adopted in the black and white, monument, yes.
So in reality, though, we have a community plan that is outdated and really has no validity at all.
I think it still has validity.
I'm not sure that that would be the case if we were further in this process because it hasn't been looked at in such a long period of time.
Could you turn the volume up on both of those, please? It's hard to hear back here.
Yeah, we tried that earlier here, and I'll just scoot in closer to talk.
Talk louder if I can.
Good, that works.
Thanks. So my last statement was based on that, since the community plan is so old and that you're standing that it has to be go through the official process, that my view then would be it's not, it doesn't have any validity, all of the having let it move in this more informal process because it is so outdated that it can't be, along with the general plan, can't even be looked at as legitimate document. But my one last question for now is, whose fault is it that the community plan and the general plan has not been updated? Now, is it the county's responsibility for things to happen, or is it the community itself to update things?
Ultimately, it's the county's responsibility, but these documents, it's a collaborative process, it's a public process, and the public, the community definitely can't request and continue to express their desire to see that community plan updated. So it's more pertinent and accurate to the current situation in that community and the vision for that community. And it's in compliance with state law as well, which has definitely changed since my community's, that one's been updated regarding housing, open space, water, so many issues. So ultimately, it's the county's responsibility, but it can be initiated and requested that it be the process started by the community. I think both.
Well, for your information before, because most of these things were happening before ...
July 8th.
Well, probably before you went to school, that the county did have a policy not to accept any community plans in the past 10 years until the general plan was done, so people didn't have a, in that process. I'm done.
Keith answered some of the questions I had. One question I have, it's currently zoned, have a commercial, right?
Yes.
And that would currently allow for a restaurant and a retail store?
Yes.
Would that go through community opinion if there was a business applicant doing that? Would there be community contributions to the permitting process?
Develop, have a site for a permitted use, such as a restaurant or a gas station?
Yeah.
Or a convenience store? Yeah, there are several by right uses. For instance, the restaurant cannot have it drive-through, so there's, you know, limitations on permitted uses. Restaurants that drive-through, kit to use permit, for example. So you have those. That would require a use permit and discretionary review. But no, the ones I mentioned, the uses I mentioned were permitted by right uses. That would not go through a public review process. They are by right, they're coming through building permit, we're good to go situation. They do not require a use permit.
Was, I've heard a lot about the bus stop being a concern that it wasn't addressed in the initial study. Was there any follow-up, or what's your summary opinion on that?
That may be in the errata. I am not, I'm not exactly sure if that may be correct. The bus stop was not addressed in the EIR. Anything to check the errata or the CEQA? Apologize, I can't answer that question without looking into that a little bit more. Apologize, I can't answer that question without looking into that a little bit more.
I have a follow-up question. I don't know if anyone's able to hear me. So I noticed it does, this project, like many that come through your office, requires CUP, cannabis or otherwise related. And I noticed in the handout today, and I don't know if, I don't remember if CUPs have a review process. There's a lot of CUPs issued on different types of businesses. If the public or the county needed to review and exist the business that's in operation, whether, I think many, many bars have CUPs, and there's a whole list of projects that require one. What can the public do if there's an issue with that business? Or is there a common review period that we look at CUPs in general throughout the county like, oh, we haven't looked at these that were issued in five years ago? Is there another option if a business was to stray from their conditions?
Yeah, and just to clarify, conditional use permit process, our land use entitlement, they're considered the development permit. It's a very public process for all, whether they're related to cannabis or not. Each zoning district has your allowed by right uses and then kicks into those, a lot of the director's use permit and then a conditional use permit. In each zone, you'll have those uses that require a conditional use permit. And that ranges from a restaurant with a drive-through and highway commercial to a full-on mining operation on Trinity River. So that is a very public process and requires public hearing and noticing. So there, unless a conditional use permit has an expiration date, or unless we get complaints or have knowledge of violations to the conditions of that use permit, because there are conditions and the attachment stays, and you have a little over two pages of conditions to this project. So it's a, yes, you may do this on the property with approval with the conditions. So there are times that we get reports of conditions not being followed. In that case, it could be referred back to the planning commission for revocation or further review if there's not an expiration date. If there's no expiration date, it just sits on the shelf and it's granted, that use is granted, it's not an issue. If there's expiration date, then yes, staff should be reviewing those. Regarding expiration date, sometimes we have those with the mining operations. And then that expires and, or again, could be revoked for not following conditions or not operating in accordance with their CEQA findings and mitigating their declaration. And also on that note, to clarify, when you have mitigation measures, they are included in the conditions of approval as well. So you'll have those that are just conditions of approval that are not mitigations, and those are condition of approval that are mitigations for the CEQA.
Quick follow-up question, if I may. Is it your experience that in other counties you worked at, that periodically the county will like review CUPs in general, like, well, we haven't looked at the ones and hate working while it's, or unless there's a complaint typically?
Exactly. There is enormous amount of conditional use permits on the shelf, and most of them we never look at again unless there's a question about the property, and someone wants to buy it, wants to know conditional use permits run with the property, not with the applicant. So oftentimes, you know, business wants to get to the chance, they want to make sure we, you know, review that CUP, whether it's with the property. So very, you know, that's not been my experience, except to take a true, it's not a staff.
Yes, I thought.
So it generally does not, or unless there's an issue or reason to...
And anyone can bring the issue to you at any time if they suspect something is not being followed under the CUP?
Yes.
Thank you.
So a couple of those questions I have. The gate being closed on Marshall Ranch Road, if that's part of the conditioning use. The process, you say there is a process in place that would allow someone to come to the planning department and file a complaint. Otherwise, there would be no reason to look into a CUP ever if there wasn't a complaint.
Again, unless there's an expiration date.
Right, I'm just speaking about expiration date.
Correct, yes.
I am curious about the water testing. It sounds like the adjacent parcels were tested, but the water testing onsite wasn't, and I'm just curious for that.
The proposed use, and the applicant is here, he may have more information on that. It's my understanding that a proposed use does not require the water testing, it's existing well, it's a permitted well. And the, there was concern in past activities on adjacent parcels where those activities were, there was intense use of logging and trucking facilities, and that was on adjacent parcels. So that part, the water was tested as far as the environmental. And again, folks in the audience might have more, more information than I do on that, on past uses and what occurred. But basically, there was nothing that triggered a need to do a water quality testing for that, for the project side.
Thanks for clarifying that. Trinity County is anticipating a retail for cannabis. As this property sits now, would there be any reason for that property to be disqualified from participating in a retail cannabis?
Not having looked at it in that light, I'm unable to answer that question. As that, the retail ordinance is in draft form, it's very, within the near future, be released for public review and comment. And so as it is drafted, it would include the highway commercial zone and the potential zoning district for the use of storefront retail cannabis facility. However, yeah, I just, I don't have an answer. I appreciate that. I'm not familiar enough with the draft of the situation, and it is subject to change. So it's very rough right now.
Thank you.
Let me clarify, it's not that rough, it's about ready to go out to public. It's not that rough, but still, it's in draft form.
Is there any questions?
Review of the Muggate declaration. There is nothing addressed about the bus stop, so that would be a concern if that's a legal issue. I know safety was a big issue for a lot of the community, and the Weston Road facility was referenced, and these facilities do, I believe, require 24-hour security, onsite security personnel, a booth and everything. So I feel like the safety issues are addressed, and it sounds like, you know, the biggest concern for me is how much does the, the community's desire to not have it their way into it, you know, in a legal basis? And, you know, I would say if it was just...
Jeremy, okay, I'm sorry to interrupt. You need to be very careful at this point, this is technical question.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, just the, my question would be, can you ensure that the bus stop issue is going to be addressed? And if it is found that there's a bus stop within the legal requirements of it needing to be addressed as a mitigated declaration, can you ensure that that's going to happen? Or why wouldn't it happen?
Well, I do, do feel that there, if there is an issue with the bus stop, that we, that that doesn't need to be considered. And although it may not be an environmental issue to be included, you know, addressed by the mitigating negative declaration, it could be addressed by the conditions. However, I am not familiar with, I would need to look at the ordinance, see if there's language regarding bus stops in the ordinance for distribution facilities, need to review state law, and then go from there. So no, I do not, I'm not clear enough on that, or, or can I guarantee, would I guarantee at this point? We could always add conditions. There's always the ability to add conditions to the project, conditions of approval. Again, not an environmental issue, but obviously a concern regarding bus stops, if that is addressed by state law, I'm not sure.
Follow Jeremy. What type of bus stop this is? Trinity Transit or school bus?
I'm not sure.
Okay, I thought I might have missed it.
Technical question or comment. This, there was a whole discussion on bus stops when distribution was being developed. In our code, it allows within 500 feet. And also, there is a list of official bus stops that the school would have submitted to the planning department typically on a yearly basis. Don't remember, you'd have to look at the list, that's probably at the planning department, if this was an official bus stop or not according to the schools. And as it was explained to me back then, that if, just that the school bus picks up some children, doesn't mean it's their official bus stop. I do not know if that falls into this situation or not, but that's something to review. But 500 feet is in our regulations on distribution.
I wasn't sure if you were going to respond to that, she doesn't have a list, so there's no response.
No, I'm not, I'm not seeing such a list, but all the other...
Madam Chair, before we go, I will ask a question. The question, the process we've been picked up since the beginning of the year. We're not here today, and the crowd isn't so large that we, if our three minutes is five minutes, we're... I'm, Madam Chair.
We're going to take a 10-minute break, and then we're going to bring it back for public comment. We're going to extend your comment time to five minutes. However, there will be no passing your time to someone else. Okay, so it is, it's a court, we'll come back at 11:00. We're going to come back into session, it's 11 o'clock, thank you. And just a reminder to turn off your cell phones, and if you have private conversations, to take them out in the hallway and close the door. Mr. Brower, looking at you, he's listening. So also, we are lengthening it to five minutes, so please pay attention to the other people speaking, and if they've already asked a question that you had written down or that you wanted to ask, please don't repeat the same questions over and over just for the sake of, of time for the board to get back to the board's business. And at that, we look forward to hearing from our public. What did I say? Wow, okay.
Usually the applicant goes first, that's why we're separating.
He didn't get up, so I'm assuming if nobody gets up, that nobody's wanting to talk.
I didn't even know I was supposed to go first.
Right, that's what I thought. So for those who didn't hear, typically, the applicant has additional time than the five minutes to speak. So I want the people in the audience to realize he's not getting any favors or any extra. This is protocol, it's a process, so we're following. Everybody clear on that?
Thank you.
Remember, please direct your questions to the board and not to staff. If a board member wants to repeat the public's question to staff, that's up to each individual board member. Thank you.
Good day. My name's Terry Mains, I'm the applicant here today. I think we probably should start this back in 2015, and we should talk about this whole ordinance and what this community came here to do, a group of people. And we came to develop, came to develop...
Your mic's...
Hello? 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 We came as a community to bring the farmers out of the unregulated, you know, black market, as they say, into the legal regulated market. And the state came with, you know, paperwork and other ideas in the Proposition 64, and so as one of the early people that got involved, you know, we came and we all as a group, the whole county did actually, you know, we had the growers, the TAA, and, you know, and we all would get with the county, and we helped to form this, this idea of what we're going to do, and move forward to try and bring some economic viability to this community. And I think that we've seen in this five years, actually, quite the opposite. We've seen a lot of our businesses and stores and restaurants and a lot of people leave. I think we've had a lot of change, but I think our intention was still to build something here and make it viable. I already do personally have a retail license, okay? So I don't want to put retail down there. I have a current license in the county for retail. It's a non-storefront delivery license. It's so I can do events, okay? Because when we talked about this years ago, we knew that selling cannabis wasn't really going down in this county. It was, the idea was that we would take our cannabis to the big cities like Los Angeles, San Diego, Orange County, and bring their money back to our county. It wasn't to, you know, that was the concept behind this. So I have a license that will allow me to do events, like Emerald Cup or whatever. I just received it actually today. So that was a nine-month process and application. So understanding that I'm here because we need distribution. I actually did distribution really for myself. I wasn't so intending to do it for everyone because I was very concerned about my own problem and understanding what the problems would come with distribution, especially if we distributed outside of county. The county would get no value of all the stuff we did in county, it would be very, it'd be a big loss for the community. So I went ahead and had my family purchase a building of property, which is absolutely the best property in the whole county to do this on, there's no question. I had a water test prior to purchase from Basic Laboratories in Reading, which showed the water was perfect, just with a little sulfur that gives it a smell. I had the water tested for amount, it was 13 gallons a minute, and so everything was fine, that's why we went ahead and purchased the property. We've been in this process a long time, it's getting late. Unfortunately, I still have 95% of my last year's harvest waiting for this. I know there's other farmers here today in the same position, had very bad experiences out of county distribution, and they're waiting for me to get this license to help them do this and bring revenue to this county. The bus stop issue is a non-issue, it was addressed a long time ago. My building is more than 500 feet away from a bus stop that was moved during this application on purpose to try and stop this application. And the county has a letter, and I, it was from Riptip previously, and I have a letter from the school, the school board and Mrs. Supahan and the DC School District that clearly says that it's a non-issue for this project. So that is a non-issue. And then I just want to be a product, productive person in this community. I really think we need this. I know that the other distribution licenses have been up for sale now, no one's doing it really. I'm committed to doing it. I'll do it, I'll, I'll do my best at it, I'll do it correctly, legally. I am in the metric system, I currently have a cannabis banking account, I have three people through the employment EDD that I pay taxes on since last October on my property. So all my people are, I have cameras, alarms, everything on my property. Not the DC one, I want to junction the city, so get that understanding. So I have, I'm, I'm ready to go. This county, we're ready to bring revenue tomorrow, literally. This county, we're ready to bring revenue tomorrow, literally. I don't say that lightly, literally tomorrow. So I plan on hiring many more people at good wages. I think that we can do this. I think our community can do this. There's been times where I've felt, that's not so sure, but I believe that we're ready. I think it's time. I'm sorry that these people feel that I'm going to put something in their place that's not right, but it's been a dead property for so long. It's really, the only other use for it I could see is rehabilitation for meth and heroin addicts under the current zone. That might be the only possible way to make a living on that property. There's no way you're going to open up a restaurant in this community right now. There's no way. It's not going to happen. No one's going to do that except the Indian Creek move. That was it. It's not financially viable. I wish it was. I mean, really, I mean, it would be cool. Maybe after we get quick in here, we bring some money and we bring some good jobs and we make the community better, we can get there with that. So really, this is, this is about making a better community. It'll be safe. I do my own packaging, by the way, at my property, so I don't need to package it. I don't know a sense, but I mean, you know, people are talking about smell. It's already prepackaged in a smell-proof case, so really, that's a non-issue. I don't know what else to say except that, you know, this county really, really, really needs this. We all went into this idea together years ago that this was going to happen. I know it's contentious, but I think it's a really good idea. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Gail Goodyear. I'm a voter in District Four. I have commitments in all of the districts in Trinity County. Over 667 pages were submitted in January of 2019 on this topic. And so, I have been concerned throughout the process about how much people have read, including the planning department's staff, that we're still at the bus stop. The bus stop is an issue. Schoolchildren in a neighborhood are an issue. I first met Mr. Mines in October of 2017. We were both in the county clerk recorder's office. He was trying to identify the number of property owners. He would need to notify for a project he had planned. And he was super excited at the counter as he was paying because he'd come up with several names. Said this is going to be a piece of cake compared to what I expected. And he paid and I said, "I don't know who you are, but I need to let you know I recognize your APN numbers and the names you have listed are not all of your neighbors." So I promptly went home and wrote a note to the supervisors and the clerk recorder, letting them know their software program did not identify people they should. I spoke personally to Keith Groves and Judy Morris about the problem at that time. Mr. Mines told me he was super excited about his economic development project. I did let him know that that piece of property was a sow's ear. It was only, only suitable for a very passive use. And so, his impression that he may have gotten by its geographic location on the map from his realtor or from just looking at the fact that it was for parcels, he was probably needed to look into it more. I did not agree that it was a location for achieving what I heard his goals on that day, nor today. From beginning, there's been a lack of emphasis, an emphasis on the lack of services, and there are numerous problems. One highlight is that Douglas City has no fire hydrants. It has a volunteer fire department that does not have a phone number that you can call. So Douglas City is heavily reliant on 911 and the response time varies considerably. There are letters in that 667 pages that address the concern about the extreme fire hazard area that this project is located in. These features are available at the Wizards Way location in Hayfork and the Industrial Park location in Weaverville. Both of those sites were approved for the activities that are proposed. Also, the Hayfork and Weaverville locations are set back from public view and are away from neighborhoods. I am extremely concerned that this thoroughfare to Southern Trinity will have this particular project right there. You won't be able to drive a different way to your home. You won't be able to reroute the Bar 717 campers away from an activity that, you know, people might prefer to be away from public view. It is part of the planning process to put certain activities away from public view. This would be one. Mr. Mines does have considerable property in Douglas City. His neighbors, I believe there's one that does not have a cannabis permit on Powerhouse Road, Upper Lower Road, but he has not chosen to propose this activity in his own neighborhood. So, over the lengthy review of this project, and also being recommended by your volunteer planning commission not to approve any of the project, I respectfully highlight the numerous reasons in the hundred of pages to justify no, no, and... It has been hard to participate in this process. There are many hindrances, including the change today to five minutes. Is there some ways to change? Thank you.
How can she start with, they don't have this stuff in front of her? That I'm going to refer to in there. Hi, my name is Veronica Kelly-Aldez, and I live on Marshall Ranch Road, Douglas City. I stand here representing our neighborhood and our community for not only myself, but the ones who are unable to be here today because of work and other commitments. Didn't know about the five minutes, which I brought my 10-minute speech, but I want to address something that, some things Mr. Mines said. He likes to come up here and say, "I've got this, I've got this, I've got this." There is a school bus stop for Douglas City Elementary. There's a photo in the packet that you just got handed, so it is official. I've gone to planning department very, a lot, and they've been very helpful as best they can with the limited staff, so thank you. But not once have I received any letter from Trinity County Office of Education, anything that says it's been addressed. No new water well. They have, you know, he likes to stand there and say, "We have a bunch of tests," and the one that he just mentioned in Reading is not on file anywhere. So it might be just a lot of this. I don't know, but they say they don't have it because I've asked specifically for that and I point, say, "Planning." You saw some of the same problems with this project that have been seen and presented time and time again. You asked the staff to reevaluate the areas you felt were most erroneous. You get the same traffic report back without even the courtesy of fixing the errors pointed out in previous meetings. It's not a retail propane, and that's on the last page of it. I have a copy if you need it. You get downloaded general data and reports on adjacent properties also downloaded or pulled from files. Files planning staff wasn't able to find, said they didn't exist, and so it says this is all okay. I provided them those, because I have half a planning in my house, I think. But I provided them with those files that say there are environmental constraints on the adjacent property. Even today, their report to you contains errors that have been pointed out time and time again, the bus stop. The septic tank permit for parcel 10 that states that it can only be used for one bathroom, however, the applicant states that there are more than 15 employees, visitors will be present, which would trigger the need for an additional bathroom, and his original application still states 40. He wants 40. You can only have 15, you need, it's 15 employees for one bathroom. So it's already going to need a second septic based on the information he supplied for the project, but none of that's been talked about and said, "You should probably get that checked out to see if you can do it." The current CUP says that there's no more room for it. The staff doesn't clarify that there's one well on the project site. I'm going to get to my good points here. There's photos in the packet that I handed you. We've been subjected to a gaseous cloud, which had odor that floats like car exhaust, large, I don't know, could be large dry ice, I don't know, but I have photos of it, and it's in your hand. I come with receipts. I don't just do this. It's not fear mongering, it's facts, which is what I'd like to present. Staff has limited time and can only rely on downloaded reports and an applicant's verbal assurances. You asked for more, and they couldn't defy the facts that are already in existence. The planning commission read the report, saw all factual evidence provided by the community, and listened to the applicant as well. They took all of that into account and consideration and found in a legal four-to-one vote that they provide you with their best recommendation based on the facts presented and their expertise and experience. Their recommendation is solid and legal. We ask you to accept their recommendation and deny the EIS, rezone, and CUP for all the legal reasons provided in their decision. And I know all of you have gone through these great questions. I was able to knock out some things, and I want to say thank you for that. This is a complicated issue for everyone involved. It is not the right site for this project. I'd like to know how the Voodooian Distribution Center is going, because we have a distribution center and an option for the growers in this county at the time. We need more, but it needs to be appropriate sites. Thank you for your time and thank you for listening and going through all the materials. Thank you.
My name is William Mochi. I don't have a dog in this fight. I'm sure both sides are passionate and I just want to say this aside. I met Mr. Mines, I met these people, and they're both nice people, and this is something that we could, we need here. We could use it as a tax revenue. It would be significant. I think Mr. Mines will do anything that it takes to make this board and planning happy and whatever it takes. I think there'd be some additional use or timeline or expiration date, whatever it is that you need to impose on. In my opinion, he'd be willing to do anything. I mean, a site is, it's a decent site. It'd be drive-by things, drive-by greenhouses every day. There's no secret that cannabis is an activity here. People that are coming out of the black market going into the white market, people that are desirous to do the right thing and pay the fees and pay the taxes, these are people that need to be rewarded as opposed to people that you have to go and chase them down and put them in jail. So, you're not paying taxes or whatever. That's just my opinion on it. If a guy's willing to do the right thing and working hard and puts his money where his mouth is and spending the money to do whatever the board, I'm sure you have infinite wisdom in us more than I do. I just think that, you know, it's something that I would use. I'm a licensed farmer, it's something that I would use immediately. You know what I mean? Right away, so I don't bother with metrics, the whole thing. Something that we need and could use. And I don't know every topic on this issue, but I can tell you that in my opinion as an outsider, I think Mr. Mines is an upstanding citizen. I don't see that as just a problem with this. I can buy the site, I don't see a problem with that. I don't know enough, I'm not an environmental studies guy. I don't know about bus stops. There's a lot of things that you have to take, and I'm sure it's a complicated issue. All right, but in my estimation, I don't think it would do any harm. I think it would be of a benefit. You talk about having restaurants here and all that. To have restaurants and to have these other things that you want, you have to build an infrastructure, you have to have people working. And so, if people aren't working, they're not paying taxes. It's just my opinion on it. I don't want to take up too much of your time. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Charles Menken from Hayfork. I just think that anybody that wants to start a legal cannabis business should have a straightforward path to do so with like little interference. And I feel like there's a way, especially just being distribution, that this could be made so that nobody has any idea what's going on there. And that security can be met with upstanding standards, and the school bus stop could be kind of a null point by having 24-hour security and then at certain times, that security officer is there to make sure the children can safely get across the street and have no issues from traffic. Thank you.
Hello, John Miller from Junction City. I want to keep this really short. I just want to start by saying, let's just keep this money in the county. Right now, we're dealing with distribution companies outside of the county that are scalping us. They're offering us super low prices for our product, and it's taken them months to pay us back. This is going to do nothing but strengthen the community for the long haul. And as farmers, we can put a friend's face to the business entity that we're dealing with rather than dealing with complete strangers. And Terry actually does have our best interest in mind. We've worked with him in the past, and he's a member of our community, and I really hope he takes this into consideration.
Thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to say something. I've been a local here my entire life, born and raised. For the past year and a half, I've been looking for solid, steady work. Recently, I met Terry and I was informed that he has a farm. There's a lot of pieces of equipment and trucks that all need maintenance work. So currently, he's put me to work full-time, which I am super appreciative of. And after a year and a half of not being able to find anything, I was thinking about relocating. So now I'm actually able to stay within county and stay where I live and love. Thank you.
My name is Steve Goodyear, and I would strongly encourage you to follow the planning commission's recommendation on this. They've put in a lot of time on this. It's been vetted twice. We still have a lot of issues. We don't have a community plan, which is holding this thing up, holding up a lot of development in Trinity County. And Mr. Mines is right, a lot of people have left Trinity County. And in my opinion, those were fine people, whether they retired or whatever reason, they still contributed to the community. They spent their money here, and they left because their rural residential neighborhoods were ruined because of all the grows that have totally gotten out of hand. And I really appreciate the growers that have come forward, but depending on who you talk to, we have 5,000 illegal grows, and we're only going to give 500 permits. In the meantime, think of all the rural residential neighborhoods, including the one that Mr. Mines moved into. I remember what that was like before people moved in and just took over and ran people out. And the other thing, I don't understand how you can rezone property like this to commercial without the water. I can tell you from years of being around that property, the people that had the logging shop hauled water for years. In a year like this, where we, if we don't get more rain, that well isn't going to be worth anything. It won't produce. We tried to develop, my father developed Reading Creek subdivision, and that parcel down below Marshall Ranch Road was basically not able to be developed because none of the wells panned out. Also, regarding the issue of the road, another issue that was there was that Marshall Ranch Road would have had to have been widened to 50 feet. So we still have the issue of the back door onto these commercial properties, and no recommendation there, which just appalls me. I also demolished two fire hazard buildings and rebuilt a much more fireproof building here in town. And even though there are three fire hydrants within 300 feet, one right across the street, I was still required to put in an additional fire hydrant. So I don't understand, I just don't, the planning commission, I think, has it right. I mean, we need to have distribution, but we need to have it in an area that either bring it up to code, get the general plan going, bring water to the area. But the way it stands right now, I don't see how you can deny your planning commissions worked so hard on this. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Dave Alby, from Douglas City, I live on Marshall Ranch Road. Um, I'm gonna try not to repeat some of the same things, but I have some more specifics. Um, you asked for soil, you asked for, uh, um, water, you asked for traffic, and you asked for, uh, smell. And, uh, the planning department came back with practically nothing on your request. Um, in fact, just to say, it's all the same. Um, the soil itself, they found that the industrial zone owned by Cross Construction was, um, deeded to prevent, um, deeded to, uh, restricted area because of the soil contamination they found on site, some of it was mitigated, others they said, "We're not gonna go any further if you deed this properly," and say that you have to say, "This is a contaminated property" before you can pass it on to the next owner. Please be aware that that same property went across the street to the present Mines' um, land. And it says in the report that that was not explored, it was not done because, uh, it wasn't owned at the time, um, and they, it was owned by other people. So they didn't go into the sections where there were also dumping, uh, waste, et cetera. And look at that. So they deeded the proper, uh, property for them. That cannot be used as an industrial zone. So everybody keeps saying, "Hey, it's already an industrial zone area, it can't be used as that, it's de-restricted." So let's just get that right out in the open. So when you start saying C3 and industrial is in the same area, the only other option then is the C3 propane tank that was put in without, uh, the neighbor's knowledge. Um, as stated on the actual CUP, it states that the, the people were not notified prior. So it was put on there because it couldn't have water and it didn't have septic. The community plan, the planning staff itself stated clearly that this area could not sustain water or septic for intended purposes. So they zoned it, it got by, and when they did have to do, um, septic systems, they could only, they did multiple holes and they couldn't find it as on the, the, the planning department's reports. And then they squeaked in one toilet, because you know, it's a good old boy network, squeak in a toilet here in a, one sink. But it states right on that report, it can't be expanded without a whole lot of further. So you've got the, the planning department itself saying, "It is not a, a, a place where you can put any of that stuff." So I'm going back to the traffic report now. The traffic report era brought up during the planning commission's being priorities could be not corrected, that would trigger left turn lane requirements. Project applicant states 40 employees, not 20, that was on his application. How it got to 20 is beyond me. Uh, you know, if you have, it's right now, it's right on the edge of having a turn lane requirement. So now you, you're fudging, go from 40 to 20. Traffic report lists wrong business when addressing the traffic analysis and driveway into the Maragast, not Mines. It says it's the Maragast, not Mines. Well, you can make that little correction, they wouldn't even do that. The, the traffic report does not assess cumulative effects of multiple businesses using same driveway entrance point. They only talk about Mines. Yeah, there's two other businesses that use that driveway and a residence. Um, does, begin to sound like you don't want that left turn lane or get this project through, maybe we'll do the left turn lane at, at the county expense millions of dollars later? Okay. Um, the school bus stop, I'm on the board. And Shannon Ross didn't tell Mines that it was not, not a, a bus stop. It's a bus stop, it's been a bus stop for as long as I've been alive, it's been the school bus stop for high school, for elementary. It's moved around a little bit, but it's a straight stretch. The curves from the left and right prohibit on, on regulations that the, the police department, uh, I'm sorry, Cal Police, Highway Patrol say if it's around a turn, you have to put up large signs, excuse me, to protect the children or put it in a straight set. So it's in a straight stretch. Um, the traffic report used wrong business models for its assessment traffic analysis, used a warehouse, not a retail. Beginning to see the picture. Traffic report does not address distribution center normal business traffic in and out. Only employees going to and from work and home to the access site. The distribution center's normal operation requires back and forth traffic to pick up product, process it, then take it to the, the test labs, take the product to market. It does not address business product owners visiting the site for contracts, et cetera, nor to and from lunch and other normal business trips to go down and get some screws. Traffic report did not address Marshall Ranch Road access. Planning department kept telling us that the parcel addresses were Highway 3 addresses, but they're not, they're Marshall Ranch addresses. Three of the four are Marshall Ranch addresses, that costs millions of dollars because both ends have got to be done as Mr. Goodyer stated, and that's millions of dollars to the taxpayers.
When does it start?
When does it start?
Okay. My name's Everett Harvey, Weaverville. Uh, I used to live in Douglas City, out on B Bar Cave Road. Uh, I actually have two parts of things I want to say. First one is I'm trying to understand this whole zoning thing. The way I understand it, if you have an area zoned in a certain manner, um, there are uses you can do in there. And the state law seems to say that to have a distribution center, you have to have a certain zoning. And, uh, so someone's trying to put a distribution center in a place that isn't zoned for it. There's two ways to handle this. The first one's sort of the typical way, which is you get like a special use permit or whatever you want to call it, which is attached to this particular person and this particular business and does not effectively change the overall zoning, it just gives a special use. And if that gets denied, then you're out of luck. The other way is to try to go around and get the state to change their definition so that distribution fits in this zoning. But that seems like a pretty tough problem to do, to get the state to change their mind. So why don't you go to the county board and get them to change their mind and rezone that thing, which is exactly what's going on. Now the problem is, this, when you rezone, it's not a special thing attached to that person. So let's say Mines decides, well, let's say he has a stroke or something, something out of the blue, ooh. And, uh, but now this area is rezoned, heavy industry can go in there. You have to now go back and untangle all of this mess. And, uh, that's my understanding of, of what's going on here, independent of, of all the other stuff. But the other topic is, this is mainly about people. This is not about land, it's not about that, it's people. And, um, early on I, uh, you know, I'm trying to grow up and I'm still working on that. Um, early on I realized that sometimes people make mistakes, but it's sometimes very hard to tell the difference. Let's say you take your car in to get repaired and the guy does a lousy job. Now it could be because he's incompetent, could be because he just made a mistake, or could be that he's malicious. You know, he does that on purpose, he put in a water pump when he didn't need it, that type of thing. So how do you view such people? You, you know, my choice was to say, "Okay, he's probably incompetent or he made a mistake." And if you go back to him again and it repeats, then you start to get a little worried. Or if you hear from other people, you know, and stuff. So we're constantly making judgments as to who's good and who isn't. Um, sometimes that can get out of hand and people collectively decide that, "Oh, people who have this color of skin shouldn't be here because they're all bad." Or, you know, uh, in high school or whatnot, one of the kids is sort of shunned by everybody because his, you know, his family's a little weird or whatnot. Well, I'd go play with that kid too and stuff. Um, that doesn't make it great, but, you know, I learned a lot from them. Um, that's sort of what's going on here, independent of that legal stuff I was talking about earlier. Uh, people generally don't want Mines there. And part of it is because he has a record of, of, of bad record in the past. Uh, he tells me that he's re, uh, I don't know what the term is, he's a good guy. And, uh, I don't know him personally, but I did argue very much against allowing felons to get in the distribution business. And I particularly have a problem, you know, if, if the state lets, you know, gets rid of these, uh, convictions, that's okay, then things are fixed. But, um, I also have this problem of people who earn money in the black market and keep that, and then try to say, "Oh, I'm a good guy."
Andrew Franklin, Junction City. Good morning. Just a couple of quick things. Uh, this project does provide two things that Trinity sorely needs, new commercial construction and jobs. I'd just like you to consider that while you're thinking about this issue. And I also would like to, um, say that Kim Hunter's really been turned in the planning commission, I mean, the planning department around since he's been there and really working hard with the short staff to provide you with good information and that we you please respect or work. And if maybe this project needs to go back to the commission, maybe it needs a little bit of work, that you've got some, uh, some problems or some questions with it, but, um, I ask you, you respect the planning department's recommendation and take a good, hard look at what she's given you, because I think she's really trying to clean up the mess there and turn that department around. Thank you.
Good morning, Jill Cox, Weverville. And a couple of things that have been mentioned so far that this county really needs, and that would be new commercial construction, we need jobs, we need to keep money in our county, we need a straightforward path for cannabis. And I would agree with all of those things. I would say that what this county needs more than that is to prioritize what's really important. And I think that when we talk about children, we're not putting them, it, it's not something that you can put on scales in an equal balance. And teachers can't be here today because they're busy teaching these children. So, my husband teaches at Hayfork Elementary School. We just had a dinnertime discussion last night that now, like when we were kids, we had what, monthly fire drills? Do you know that now they have yearly fire drills because there hasn't been a fire in the school since like 1957? But they have monthly open shooter drills. They teach the kids how to pick up their Chromebooks and go to a space in the room. And what they should do, they teach them how to throw things, it could be anything, you can throw your Chromebook, you can throw an eraser, anything that distracts. And so when we talk about kids and safety, it's just not about whether or not we need this, I think we can all agree that that would be why there's the money and jobs and the whole thing of it. It's really about placement. We've got the placement wrong. So I just would urge you to think that undoing something that's done is really hard, but thinking long and hard about making sure that every component of it is done correctly upfront is really critical. So I think it's okay to be just be still for a minute, I have five, I have three left. This thing is really important to think about kids. And you can see that it's within the letter of the law, maybe a 500 feet from a bus stop is required. We could be at 501 feet or whatever it happens to be and be by the letter of the law, within the law. But what happens in those few extra feet that just isn't on paper, that can matter too.
Cheryl Mylan, Weaverville. I've been coming to these meetings as well as the planning commission for well over a year now. I sit in the back watching and listening to all that's being said. I'm more curious than anything, as I'm not directly affected as of yet. I'd like to summarize what I have heard and saw. Those opposing this rezon aren't all necessarily against cannabis, as Mr. Mines would have you to believe. They are against the location. The property has major environmental issues, as well as is in direct proximity to family homes and will directly impact human lives. Every one of their senses will be violated. And this can't be discounted, all for one man's monetary profit. Pot has been growing in this region for well over 50 years. The pot growers have never had an issue getting their product to the buyers and the consumers, legal or not. It even made its way down to us kids in Southern California, as well as to have friends of mine back on the East Coast. Where did it come from? The Emerald Triangle. I'm pretty sure every person in this room has heard that label. A good portion of those opposing this have a long history in this community, this is their community. Some of these people descend from families, their parents and grandparents' hands have been in the very soil over a century ago to help create what we see and enjoy today. Their histories and photos are documented in our museum, they're vested in this. The properties in question for rezon have big issues. Drainage, well water issues, as well as a host of others, inclusive of illegal spot zoning. Known issues to those opposing have, have known issues that those opposing have brought over and over for, for decades of personal knowledge, as well as shown documented contradictions to what Terry Mines would have you believe have been miraculously resolved, like wine to water or water to wine. Mines has an answer to every issue and concern brought up, of course he does. There is already activity on that property. I've driven by and I've seen refrigerators being brought in, household type ones, nothing fancy. I've been told of smells already coming out of the building, comings and goings and the corresponding noise. Seems he is moving forward in some capacity with or without his rezon. Terry Mines saunters up to the podium and arrogantly insults and name calls these people. Back at his seat, he cusses, he makes veiled threats. I've even witnessed him intentionally bumping into someone and loudly saying, "Don't push me." I've also witnessed him threaten bodily harm to the TAUSD Board President at one of the board meetings. You will all go home to your little piece of, of paradise, possibly thinking, "Phew, that isn't in my front yard." And these people, especially those on Marshall Ranch Road, are left to deal with the repercussions of your decision. The planning commission has done their job and they did a due diligence and voted four to one to reject this rezon. If you, if you vote otherwise, the impression could lean towards chromism and then what's, what is left at that point? The planning commission is really just wasting their time.
Seeing no more movement, I am going to fade out. You don't have to, you don't have to wait to be last, just come on, get close to the microphone so we can call on you if people would close it.
Good morning, my name's Dana Ryan. Born and raised here. To, um, just to add to Mrs. Cox's statement with the children, my kids don't even go in the woods anymore. Fishing, hunting, horseback riding. My family in Hayfork, they didn't drink the water anymore. They used to drink out of the creek. And so did we, being raised here. I'm looking for a positive, and I ain't seen no positive with any of them marijuana. And like Cheryl just said, it was always here. It was always, everybody had access to it. Our friends grew it, our friends went to work, our friends went logging, went and tended their pot. And it was always here. I realize it's coming, it's, it's legal. And we're stuck with it. I'm asking you to please back your planning commission study, which the board seems to always have done that, have dealt with, um... have always have done that, have dealt with the, the planning and the supervisors for 32 years. I dealt with Mr. Grove's dad. On the conditional use permit, I'm wrapping myself off. They don't come back around unless somebody calls in, so that's everybody you were trying to clarify. Whatever you agree to, that's good. You got your permit, and you're in, but they don't come back around. And I'm okay with that. I tried to abide by it, but a few things, I didn't. I e my car lot 32 years that I've had in Weaverville. The board said no stuffed animals, no neon flashing lights. I can't put on my white suit and my pink boots and go out there and try to chase people down like old Cal Worden used to. That wasn't legit. I agreed to it, and a few things I broke. I went with the neon, and I tried to get some business there, but thanks to our old board and our old planning commission that listened, and it really did help out, so that I could do that 32 years ago. So I'm saying, if you would decide to make a decision and let Mr. Mines do this, if you would consider at least prohibiting the retail, I, I hope you don't, I don't hope, I hope you don't collapse this and fold on this and let him do it, but if you do, he doesn't need the retail, he stated it, so if you could put that down, so if he would sell out, some big millionaire coming to buy his, his business, that it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be legit to do that. This whole pot thing's got, any business that I deal with held up. I'm trying to get a shopping center, a new grocery store. It's been a year and seven months, and it's tangled up in this stupid pot world. We can't even get that done. We're talking about a multimillion dollar project. The first year, they couldn't even issue a permit. No fault for the New York, not even a permit issued to a huge developer because of pot. I'm asking you to show me one thing that marijuana has developed and placed in an existing structure. Show me something that's been developed, that's visual. Show me somebody that has money, that's in business, that, that produces something that we can see that the pot has done for our community. It's coming. The pot's coming. The pot's coming. Mr. Finley, I think, helped get this tax thing going. Who's gonna do the bookkeeping for that? Who's gonna keep track of that? Who's gonna pay? We're gonna have hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to keep track of it. So I don't see that coming out either. But thanks for trying it, and it got passed. So I, you know, I just don't see the benefit yet. I mean, everybody's saying it's coming. Mr. Mines is going, boy, the, the economy's terrible. You know, it's, it's just terrible, housing. Housing, more people are moving out. If you pick up the Journal from yesterday, Tri-County release says there's more people moving out than people moving in. I can tell you, folks, and in public, Mr. Mines, I can tell him in public, it's the pot. It's the pot, the way that we've, we've made it where you have to take out these permits, and it's all visual, and it's by everybody's houses where they're moving out. Well, my old friends are leaving. They don't want it. They don't want it by their house, they don't want the threat of guns, somebody robbing the place, getting them hogtied. They don't want that part. So the old timers are pulling out, and the tourists. I'm not taking my family anywhere where there's big grows, there's meth, there's heroin, we can't even control what we've got. So I'm asking you to please support the planning board that you guys have, that you rely on for their information to do the study.
I'm sorry. The timer, yeah, I didn't, sorry, Dana.
Okay, they've done their study, and I'm, I'm asking you to at least pay attention to that. Thank you.
Sorry.
Is it not working at all? Should we use?
No, it's working, I guess, it's okay. This was a check.
Good morning. Thank you guys for having another meeting about this. This is obviously a very contentious thing, and I think all the people who have shown up for the last four or five meetings will let you know that. So just a few things here that I've jotted down about what I've heard today and in the past meetings. I, I agree with Terry. We do need distribution, transportation, and dispensaries. That's not the place for it. The last two public meetings we've had here, the public comment has been very, very heavy against this, this spot here. I think the people in the chairs behind us are full, and I think the last one, there's 200 signers against this, this proposition that he's trying to do. Proposition, back to Terry saying dispensary is coming, I think there's something in the works right now that is pretty close to being done, as far as I know. Terry did buy the property without, we're doing water tests and soil tests. I myself would have bought the property doing a zoning check. I'm not sure at this point why we don't know about the bus stop. We should know about the bus stop by now. But that's, you know, that's one of the 10 things that are wrong. I think he said he was planning on having events out there. I don't know what type of events, but I think Trinity County should have events, cannabis events would be great. But I do think that triggers the, the over traffic part there. I think we're buttoned up against it as it is, just with the employees and all. I think when you start to have events there, you're gonna exceed that traffic. And I was at a board supervisor meeting not too long ago, six, eight months ago, a right-hand turn lane in Denny cost $2 million. And we may need a right-hand turn lane and a left-hand turn lane there with the events that may go on there. So I think that this kind of doesn't need to burden, you know, that cost, we already have not enough money. So I just hope that you listened to the, the planning commission. You know, one of the last things that they said was, but one more thing before that. Marshall Ranch Road is, is zoned RR20. It's a, it's a neighborhood. It's zoned as a neighborhood. That wasn't properly looked at in their documents. And, you know, the last meeting that we had here, the planning commission recommended do not approve any part of this project, any part. And that comes from the planning commission who has looked at this twice, as you guys have now. And I will say again, do not approve any part of this project. There's other places for dispensaries, manufacturing, and distribution here in Trinity County. That would be better served, the committee doesn't need it. And last thing, I think I heard Terry say, was we do not need food in Douglas City. There is no food between Weaverville and Reading going east, so we do need food in Douglas City. And that may be a good place for it in the future. So just wanted to say my piece and let you know how I feel about that, and I agree with the planning commission. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Joan Brown.
It seems like the applicant might have something else to say, too.
It's due time.
I'll try to be brief. Spoken on this matter several times before, and this is a controversial one, is a very gut-wrenching decision before the supervisors today. On one hand, you've got a neighborhood that would really rather not have this project as currently described in the project description. On the other hand, you've got the poorest county in the state, that as we think in the neighborhood of 5,000, unlicensed grows, a couple hundred licensed. And I think from time to time, supervisors have used their wisdom in trying to navigate this, this, this commercial cannabis question. And this is one of those times, it's a tough one. And the, as far as site-specific environmental concerns, I think the current staff report deals with those well. In terms of the Douglas City Community Plan, it seems it has not been properly updated. The, the impacts of a distribution facility on that neighborhood would be very similar to the pre-existing impacts of the prior trucking company there. As far as a, a location in Trinity County for trucking and warehousing, there, there is no better location. It is a beautiful location for that use. It seems to me that the project description could be changed, there could be a compromise that could allow this to be workable for, for everybody involved. And I would encourage supervisors to seek some sort of compromise. The applicant is trying to rezon for parcels, and the neighborhood feels like that is just blowing it up beyond what they would like. And C3 heavy commercial designation, zoning designation is uses that they would not like to see. Perhaps the project description could include SUD for this specific purpose on one or two of the parcels, instead of heavy commercial. Perhaps the parcel with the existing residents could be rezoned to rural rez or residential. It seems like there could be compromise here on this tough one. And I think the five of you are in a position to encourage that and try to help make this thing work here. We have, we have opportunities that appear occasionally before, before us as a community and before the US supervisors, and this is one of those opportunities. It could be a great opportunity, it could be beneficial to the community at large, if navigated thoughtfully. So I encourage you to please seek compromise if possible, and allow this thing to move forward in some way, some fashion. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jed Medine. I live there, on Marshall Ranch Road, I'm one of the neighbors. I think there, there are better places for this. There are actual industrial zone, already zoned places. In Weaverville, we've already got some, some distribution centers going in, in Hayfork, and people who need to have their product distributed, they have options right now, while we put, hopefully have put this in a better spot. Another big issue I'm worried about is the water is not on the warehouse parcel, it's on a different parcel. And they need to have, and it's, I just don't think there's enough water coming out of there. We have water issues down on Marshall Ranch Road, and especially in dry years like this. I, I'm new to the, the neighborhood, but we are running into issues with water. Dave's been there, Veronica's been there for years, and Dave's family's been on that property, next to my property, and they're constantly having water issues. Another issue is the septic. The septic cannot support what he's proposing. I guess that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, I think, Mr. Mines, before you get up, I, I know there was a couple of things specifically that Mr. Alves said regarding your event license on that property, and also, I believe, excuse me, Ms. Liam Gogan, not Mr. Alves, that I think you wanna correct. And there was a couple of other things that I heard, and I'm going to consult my board, whether they feel that that is a legitimate thing to bring you back up. And there was a few things that were said that were out of context to you as a board, have those clarified.
My board, yeah.
Please, Mr. Mines.
Okay, first off, the event license thing is for me, but places not at my place, it's so I can go to other counties, you know, and do an event like the Emerald Club, like I explained. Believe it or not, I think there's some history here that doesn't understand. My property actually was propane, the propane property a long time ago. The building that's next to the house, the residence, was actually a retail propane distribution center. So the property was propane, already did propane on my property. Christie, for environmental health, came out when I purchased the property. When we first did this application, I had to pay $185 to the county, and she had a thing that explained all the soils had been through the state and the federal program, that it was all certified, that everything was contaminant-free, and everything was okay. So, and that was been discussed at many of the meetings, you know, a lot of people here came the last year, this has been going on for three years. So this is a lot longer than that, and all those things were addressed. I did send Miss Hunter proof from the school district that that bus stop is absolutely okay. I emailed, I texted her, because I have those still in my system, in my phone, while I was sitting here. I dug that out, sent her the information, one letter from Rick Tippett, one from Leslie Hubbard, and one from the school. So I don't really, I think those are addressed. I know that one lady in the back, and I don't know what her name is, she was back there, she discussed a bunch of things I did. Well, I don't care about that, but what I do care about is, she was talking about 50 years of cannabis going on here, and yeah, there has been. And I was one of those people doing it the other way, but I believe that the state wanted us, the county wanted us, to do this a different way so we could be very beneficial to the community by paying taxes and we could get some money in here. So I think, like, they're still wanting you to cover the illegal farming and not cover the legal. That's what I'm hearing right now, is that everybody's cool, and I've heard Mr. Alves say he grows in the planning meetings. I don't think he's a licensed farmer. I know Mr. Gogan, or Gogan, so, right, he, he planted, he, not against, he had planted it before, and I, other people, but this is about, Ryan, this is about, that's a lie.
That's a lie. Alright, lie. So, we're not going there.
Yeah, that was all lies.
We're recording, it's a lie. Mrs. Mike.
Yeah, outside. Kim, and this was one of the clarifications, I think I can do it through Tim. Obviously, this was rezoned to C3. The issue of having retail there, once it's C3, retail can't go there, because we're moving from highway commercial to C3. And this application isn't for retail. If there ever, if it was to remain highway commercial, once we have a retail ordinance, they would have to submit a different application on retail. I just want to clarify that for the public, that this application does not entail retail. If it's zoned to C3, highly unlikely retail could go there anyway. Do I have that done right?
I don't have a ordinance in front of me, but the C3 is, is heavy commercial.
Right.
And as that, again, it's, it's in draft form, and it shortly remains the retail storefront ordinance, could be released to the public in the near future. But it does list currently, as drafted, commercials on.
Oh, it does.
So yes, the C3 is currently included in that, including the highway commercial. So you have C1, C2, heavy commercial, and the C3 heavy commercial. So yes, retail would be allowed, but it's not included. It's not included in this project description, and mattering on what, you know, the end result the ordinance that is adopted requires, that would have to be a separate either license or permit, when that's defined.
So I just want to make sure there was no confusion, that this didn't entail retail as.
Not retail, and not manufacturing, and not events. Okay, it's in the project description list, and those are the usings that are covered with those conditional use permits, no others.
And then Mines, some other clarification, some items that we'll discuss between all parties for the bus stop letter, some other issues without documentation.
I was gonna say, we officially are, have ended public comment now.
Okay, I thought there was gonna be a single clarification, but nobody else came up, so thank you. Oh, please continue. Thank you. So is there any other further documentation that's not in our board packet that illustrates some of these issues, like the bus stop, or some of these soil issues that we can see?
There's a huge amount of documentation available, but that has not been, you can't attach every item that we get in the file.
Yeah, I just, you know, there's the issue of water, and whether it's on this parcel or not, I mean, those are some issues that have been raised today, and.
They are, they are issues that have been raised. I do want to emphasize that environmental health. Our environmental director, Kristi Anderson, has been to the site.
Yes, mentioned.
And there are peruses in the, in the conditions of approval, there is language about septic. So when a property is developed, the septic on site, if there is one, may be adequate for what's there before, however, that doesn't mean it will be adequate. So there is language in conditions of approval.
Okay.
Saying, hey, you know, if, if your septic's not adequate, you need to upgrade. Saying, hey, you know, if your septic's not adequate, you need to upgrade it. And you need to be compliant with the state laws. I think that is on the second page of these exhibits, conditions nine and 11, which is specific. Regarding a well on a adjacent parcel, there's always, the well has also been reviewed by environmental health and it is possible to have a shared well agreement for adjacent parcels. Currently, it's under, the property's under one ownership. So for new development, that might become an issue. But we're talking existing development and the existing structure that's being renovated, existing well. So should someone want to build a house on one of the vacant parcels, and residence is a bad example, does not really allow by the zone except for the use permit. But say somebody wants to develop one of the vacant parcels without the well, then that would be an issue for new development. If parcels should sell separately, a shared well agreement is not the preferred choice, but that could happen as well. So the well being on, but not on the project site parcel, I don't think is relevant to the project and there's ways around that. Should there be new development?
I still have a couple more to look, if the board doesn't mind or chair. And then on, and the issue of water, there's been questions raised about the issue of having enough water. And I don't, I'm trying to look quickly through the CUP that you handed out today, the measures that would be required. And I assume that there's been a well check in, through either environmental health?
Same as the, same with the well. Environmental health has checked the well. I think I have very, lots of knowledge on the, and understanding this is an area with water constraints, adequate water supplies, definitely. But for the proposed use of a distribution facility, water used by the well, the project site, that part, those four parcels was adequate for the proposed use.
Okay, then my next question is, as the issue was raised about the, I was looking at the map here as it was being discussed. The Marshall Road issue, obviously I don't know if this would work or not, but I, we could put whatever we want as mitigated measures.
In condition of approval.
Yeah, in condition of approval. Could there be some language that would limit that use of road as it kind of goes through a neighborhood?
Yes, there could be and I would recommend it.
Okay.
For these approvals.
And then my last question, as I was thinking here, we've, we've seen this project go back and forth for, I don't know, at least over a year. And this maybe is a question for council too. Is there history ever on any project that parties can sit down privately with a mediator and look at what could be resolved? I get the sense it's obviously a very heated issue. If it's denied, this project could get, the next step of appeal is to the court. And likely, most voices in terms of what they would need would not be allowed necessarily in that setting. I don't know. It seems to me if that initial neighborhood can sit down with the applicant, with staff or and council or a mediator, to see if there's any other things that are getting overlooked that could get remedied, but I don't know. Is that a different approach? And maybe they can refuse not to sit down and that's fine, but.
There's, there's always options. There's always options. This has been, as we all know, a very long process and there were some modifications for process, to the project that were considered by the applicant and we withdrew those. And, and I feel that there's been, there's been some review and maybe not moderation per se, but I feel there's been a lot of work behind this team to consider options because this is what's here today.
Okay. Thank you. That's all from me at the moment. Thank you.
I'm trying to put this in form of a question in case I'm wrong, so then learn something. But it seems to me we're getting a little confused between the licensing of the land and the rezon. So for example, in the environmental document, it doesn't matter where the bus stop is, but to get a license, which is not what we're deciding today, it does become an issue for the project. So that you do have conditional use permits under the, conditional uses under here for the project that is stated.
Yes.
But, but it still isn't, he's still not make, this does not make him compliant with our cannabis laws.
With the county's.
With the county's cannabis laws, yes. Right, so that's another step that's in the later day, correct?
Our code states that a distribution facility must be, cannot be located within 500 feet of an authorized school bus stop.
Right, but if on the, what we're deciding today, that really isn't germane, is it?
Can I have a little bit maybe? What I believe Supervisor Groves is trying to do is distinguish between the, the two items have been interwoven. What we're here today isn't to approve a cannabis distribution license. It's here specifically to look at a rezon. Did that clarify it?
No, that's, that's not.
Okay, so that's not correct, so you are.
No, we, well, there's, there's a distribution license which could be granted after the land use entitlement. So we're talking about a rezoning to a zone, the C3, which allows a distribution facility. The C3 zone is consistent with the general plan, land use specification in this village. And the case can be made that it's similar uses to adjacent land uses, so it's, it's an appropriate request as far as the zoning goes in relation to the general plan, the community plan, and, and surrounding uses.
But what we're not deciding.
So that, yes, that is, that's being decided today. And then the land use entitlement to allow a distribution facility, and that is being considered today. That is the land use entitlement being considered, they have part in this package. Then license for distribution would have to be issued as well after the green light is given, should it be given on the rezon and the CUP, then a license can be applied for.
And that's the secondary thing that we're not doing today. And I think that was the point.
So, and this is where my original comment about the conditional uses, that you say the commission went over, I did not mutate, the commissioner, two commissioners told me that they didn't.
The conditions of approval?
Yeah. That, that they just, when they got to that point. Again, I'm getting that.
I, I do not recall them, no, I do not recall the discussion or review of conditions of approval. Didn't get that far.
Okay, so why wouldn't that have to go back to them then? If, if we said today the rezon's okay, the conditions have not been looked by.
The conditions are approved for the conditional use permit.
Right.
Yes.
So you said earlier today that, that, that it would not go back to them?
I said earlier today that the conditions of approval would not go back to them?
Yes.
I don't recall saying that.
So we won't get a hung up on that. We'll go back to, so with those then, if we approved that we find that the rezon documented adequate, then the conditional is approved, wouldn't go back to them?
No, the package is, is presented today and the, the planning commission has had the chance to review these items. If the planning, if the planning commission did not choose to review the conditions of approval, but still chose to recommend the project, I, I don't understand why.
Because it's had no review, public review at that level.
The conditions of approval?
Yeah, they didn't discuss it.
So they're, they're saying they didn't receive it to discuss, or is that what they're saying?
No, 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 they're saying it was there, but they didn't review it because they turned the project, that they voted to deny, so there was no reason to go through those. So they stopped their process at that point.
They did, they, yes, no, no, they, that was, that was the January 2019 meeting. At the January 2020 planning commission meeting, they had a chance to come out and review those. Should they have not decided to and they made their motion, there's no reason for them to go back. They were made available for their review. They denied the project and now it's before you.
I don't believe that they feel that that was clear to them.
They have the CUP. They, they made a motion on the CUP and they reviewed the CUP application.
And they said since they're denying it, there's no sense in going any, going line by line to the CUP?
Right.
Well, that, that seems to me like they, you're saying they chose not to review it.
Yes, I, I am saying that. It was, it was produced, it was provided, and they chose not to review it.
If we move forward, would it, could this board send those back for them to review once they've been told that we overturned their, or overturned the rezon?
Yes.
Thank you.
So earlier, and I, thank you. And I know it's very difficult to sometimes.
It's been a complex process and a complex project.
So you, you mentioned that that would be one of the recommendations on the road that Supervisor Groves had made. Did you have any other recommendations going forward?
We got the conditions of approval?
Yes.
We definitely, now that we got the response, if everybody's set straight, should these conditions of approval be, and that's the CUP sent back for, for the review for the, regarding conditions of approval for the conditional use permit? Yes, I, I feel that they're, based on what we've heard on going through the process, I feel that several areas could, it can help adding conditions of approval in several areas that concern.
Okay, so on our exhibit A, we moved the recommended conditions of approval besides the ones that are stated. Are there any additional ones based on today that you feel we should add to the supplement?
I'm going to jump in here. If, if you feel that, which you've already stated, that there could be more, then that alone should be a reason to send the commission back down for a public comment in view. The only way, we, we should not be up here doing the commission's work. So, and you may, and you stated, and I understand what you're saying, that the commission didn't, did not choose to look at them, but then that also means the public didn't have a chance to comment on. And I think that's very important that maybe there's conditions that the public might propose.
I'd love to just jump in really quickly. They did have an opportunity to comment on them because they were part of the packet at the planning commission meeting. I was at that planning commission meeting, they were part of the exhibit. There was no public comment necessarily taken on those, but they did have an opportunity to.
They have an opportunity on the big picture, but not, you know, these are done more, more workshop than that, than what we do here at this board. And if they would have gone down this line by line and given public comment at that time, I'm sure that.
They did have that opportunity, yes.
So there were some, I thought, balanced remarks today made that it's not just about the project, but the personalities and some of these things. And full disclosure at break, I did ask Mr. Mines if what, he had any intentional plans after if this didn't go through. And he shared that openly today, so I just want to fully disclose that. I did inquire about that. Some of the things that I heard from the concerns today, and also for a remedy to be provided that would be a mutual benefit, even though both parties feel community and the person applying feel like they're far away, but an SUD, could an SUD be utilized in this situation at all?
Why?
That's why, it was brought up by a published comment, so I'm asking you.
No.
Okay, thank you.
The, the post, the rezon to the C3 is, is appropriate.
Okay, thank you. That was a question from the public that I felt would be of that sort of business point. If I heard Supervisor Groves and Director Hunter correctly, these potentially would go back to the commission, these conditions of approval? Did I hear that correctly? If the board chose to do so? If the board chose to do so, I think although it likely is covered in these conditions already under state and local law, the issue of security, of course, a lot of that security issue is covered under the state law when it comes to this activity also, and I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head, as well as I think there is some very regulated limitations on signage where this should be a very nondescript building. And I'm going off the top of my head if I recall the state law on this activity. So it shouldn't be full of neon sites or drive here because it's not really a public activity. It's business to business. So it should be covered in here, but that should be double checked.
Oh, I have a question for council. Does the planning commission's opinion or vote, is that legally binding opinion that's upheld in court, or in the court?
The process is the planning commission makes a recommendation to the board. Then the recourse for the applicant in this case is to bring it to the board for consideration and action. The action that you take here today could be appealable to the court. So that's how the process goes. Their appeal comes to you. You can uphold it or not. This decision today can be appealed to a higher level to the court.
Question from Director Hunter. Would the potential rezon, in terms of other allowable businesses under the rezon, would it be lowering the allowable traffic? Is the HC allowable traffic versus the, the C3 allowable traffic? Is there a big difference there?
So the HC is more allowed uses. I'm just going to read through them and we'll come here real quick. And the highway commercial, you have convenience food store with or without petroleum sales, restaurant without, without drive-through, auto service station, hotel motel 10 units or less hooked up to a community sewer system, general office, retail stores and services in addition to other highway commercial. other highway commercial uses, church, and other similar uses. Those are allowed by right. In the C3, you have warehouse, mini-store, cabinet shop, commercial services, metal fabrication, welding shops, wholesale, sales and storage, and auto repair. So it's hard to say. It matters on the use in general. Yeah, it's just hard to say. Different types of uses, and each has their own type of traffic. Where you get into the heavy traffic uses is in those uses that are allowed with the use permit. And then, again, that's discretionary, and there's be a traffic study and be more a closer review to that rather than the by right uses. So I can't answer your question, but that gives you an idea of a comparison of the types of permitted uses in these zones.
Sophia, on these requested actions, they're separated by three numerations. Do you want three specific motions, one per...
We have not in the past. I think on prior occasions, the board has... I think on prior occasions, the board has taken and considered no petition with any but typically, I believe you've considered the item at both, and one motion on the entire and resume.
I would agree with you that that's fine with this particular one that's presented to you as a full ordinance, and you can do it all as one.
Chair, a motion. I'd like to make a motion to deny any part of this project as presented.
First question, just for clarity. So no clarification, going back to the planning commission is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Aye.
Supervisor Fenley?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
No.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
Supervisor Chappert?
No.
I was looking to see if there was a motion being made.
Oh, there's a...
Aren't we done?
Yeah.
Subspun, we're done?
No subsequent was brought forward.
No, it's no subsequent.
Yeah, there was only one motion on the table. Let's load it on.
Time for lunch.
You don't need to make an actual action.
Oh, we have closed session.
So...
Sophia, if I may?
Yes.
Please explain what just happened, so the audience isn't waiting to hear what happened.
A motion was made by Supervisor Fenley to deny the motion. There was a second... Or to deny the approval of the ordinance. There was a second taken by Keith Groves. There were no other motions presented in favor of or to amend that motion. So when the vote was taken, that ended your item. If there was going to be a motion to approve, it needed to be done prior to taking the vote.
So nothing...
First question. So nothing moves forward in either direction, except it's...
The application, the ordinance has been denied. You've basically upheld the planning commission's recommendation to deny the project.
And Sophia, the next option is, from an appeal standpoint?
I can't give legal advice to anybody else.
Don't me too, yes.
But I did explain to Supervisor Brown that this is a binding decision.
Wow. So I'm going to read closed session?
No, if I may. For the item to come back to the board, what process is that?
It's in the application. It's been denied.
As has been indicated previously, my answer to Supervisor Brown, there is an further appeals process, but at this stage, that's where you're...
Can you repeat that sentence, please?
I said there is an appeals process.
There is an appeal process.
Right, absolutely. But I can't give any further legal advice than that.
Right. It just requires clarification. Absolutely, that's all. So closed session. Item 2.1, Government Code, Section 54954, E5, parentheses, E, Public Employee Evaluation County Administrative Officer. Anyone wants to speak to this item that we're going into? Public comment.
Public comment, okay.
Closed session.
Do you have your contact?
They're there.
I think I'm very... Is this closed session? Please, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I know.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. I...
In regards to the closed session matter, I think it's a reviewing of Richard Coons as CEO, his job performance. Is that what the closed session matter is? Are there other closed session matters?
The CEO.
Then I think CEO Coons has done a wonderful job. He showed up to a ship on fire and sinking fast. The ship has not sunk. It's still on fire, but he has kept the ship from sinking. And he's brought in talented, hardworking folk to assist in this effort, Director Hunger and others.
Yeah, there's no argument, yeah.
So I encourage supervisors to continue empowering him, supporting him, and try to give him whatever tools he asked for to help keep this ship afloat and try and get these fires put out. Thank you. One last question here. At the break, Bobby said she went out and talked to Terry Mines to find out.
This is only public comment for item number 2.1? Closed session?
That was mine. I don't care if there was a request for a break, I did go through it, but you are the chair, you can leave however you want. It's such an opportunity, so...
Go ahead, Dean, please.
At the break, Bobby, you went forward, Bobby, and talked to Terry about what his real plans were with this property.
That's not what I said. You continue.
I think you said, what are your plans for this property? He answered you straightforwardly, you say. I think that, first of all, he may or may not have answered you straightforwardly, that's yet to be determined, and that could sway your decision one way or the other. And I don't think you could ask the applicant, what are you going to do as a board member? Seems odd to me. I just don't think that is part of the system at the break. I could be wrong, that's fine. I just think it's biased. If you had said something unbelievably great, you'd think that. Unbelievably terrible, you may think that. And that's my concern.
No, we're good.
Thank you. Not right?
They're not going to respond to you. Yeah.
I'm trying to get to on record, we're at three minutes left.
Does anybody need to use a restroom?
No question. I'd like to watch you.
The board met in closed session.
Board met in closed session, evaluation was held.